For worship of Mayor and Councilor, Hockney.
Good evening colleagues, welcome to this meeting of the Borough Council, please be seated. This meeting has been recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public in the public gallery and all those watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the public gallery without interfering with the business of today's meeting. If the fire alarm should sound, can those sitting in the public gallery exit through the doors behind them? And those sitting in the council chamber leave the room by the doors behind me and make your way to the front of the town hall. To limit disturbances, please ensure mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent during the meeting and that we have no interruptions or disruption from the chamber floor or the public gallery that makes conducting business difficult. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. Please remember to switch the microphones on when speaking and elevate the microphone so you're able to speak into it towards you. But also to switch them off when not speaking because it does interfere with other microphones. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by raising their hand and being invited to speak. All other councillors must remain silent while another member is speaking. Members are reminded that the code of conduct applies to this meeting and we should always demonstrate respectful and courteous behaviour. We must also promote the practice of decent and civilised behaviour at meetings of the Borough Council. Full council today will only deal with business that is set out on the summons. I have received apologies from the following councillors. Councillor Forman, Councillor Portouse and Councillor Duncan. Sorry, Councillor Portouse, I didn't realise you were in the meeting. And Councillor Amar. Are there any other members who wish to make me aware of any apologies? No, thank you colleagues. We now move on to item one, item one declarations of interest. I'm sorry, somebody speaking? Yes, councillor Malcolm. Sorry, councillor Traynor.
We're going to make a declaration of interest, sorry, just carry on, apologies.
Thank you. Yes councillor Walsh? Right, we're moving on to that if you just wait one moment please. The first item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make a declaration of interest before we move on to the item of business? Councillor Portouse?
Thank you Madam Mayor, I think that's where the confusion come in because I wasn't going to attend but I'm Chair of South Tyneside Homes and don't have dispensation, so I will have to leave during the debate.
Thank you councillor Portouse, councillor Traynor.
Nice, thank you, thank you Madam Mayor. I would like to take my interest as an employee of Tynan Fire Rescue Service as there is no decision for the council to make in respect of the Tynan Fire Authority's precept, I can remain in the meeting and participate in any discussion and any vote.
Thank you councillor Traynor, councillor Keegan.
Thank you Madam Mayor, declaring interest as a member of the Fire and Rescue Authority and I have a dispensation.
Thank you councillor Keegan, councillor Flynn.
Yeah Chair, I've got two declarations to make, the fire authority but as has previously been said, as there's no decision on the precept, I'm able to participate in the meeting discussion and vote. Also as a member of the board of South Tyneside Homes, it's not a disclosable pecuniary interest, just a personal interest. So again, I'm able to participate in discourse and vote.
Thank you councillor Flynn, councillor Walsh.
Madam Mayor, I would like to declare my interest as a member of the Northumbria Police and Crime Panel as there's no discussion for the council to make in respect of the Northumbria Police and Crime Commissioner precept, I can remain in council meeting and participate in the discussion and in any vote. And Madam Mayor, I would also like to declare my interest as a member of South Tyneside Homes. It's not a disclosable pecuniary interest and is a personal interest. I can therefore remain in the meeting and participate in the discussion and in any vote.
Thank you very much councillor Walsh. Sorry councillor Guy.
Thank you Madam Mayor, I would like to disclose a non pecuniary interest. I'm a governor of Mortimer Community College and in the council cap table programme there is a £2.8 million budget for Mortimer School expansion.
Thank you councillor Guy, anyone else? Councillor Huntley?
Thank you Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare an interest as a board member of South Tyneside Homes. It's not a pecuniary interest and it is a personal interest only, therefore I can remain in the meeting in Tairport. I'd also like to declare my interest as the Chair of Governors at Ebony Bead Cooperative Trust in respect of item four. Again, I do not receive any remuneration, so it is only a personal interest, thank you.
Thank you councillor Huntley, is there anyone else? Thank you colleagues. Colleagues, I'm sorry councillor.
Point of order please.
I'm sorry.
It's about declarations of interest, can I have a point of order please? Thank you.
Which procedure hasn't been followed?
If you let us speak, I want to tell you it's under the constitution.
Excuse me councillor.
Under the constitution, page 183 is what I'm speaking on that.
Excuse me councillor.
Oh yeah, I understand, but carry on.
I will allow you to speak, but on which point are you making?
That's how I would introduce it if you had the letters. Now I'll introduce what I want to speak about, it's about procedure and it's about declarations of interest. Page 183 of the constitution, which I've got a spare copy of if you need it lady mayor. In fact, I'll pass it up and then you know I'm telling you the truth, you pass it up please. We've just put to bed the declarations of interest. I'm one of the newest councillors in this chamber and I shouldn't have to be telling people who've been here 20 years what the constitution says and I'm going to read it out here, right? It says at page 183, furthermore, a member must declare any relevant dispensation at a meeting of the council or one of its committees or subcommittees, either at the start of the hearing, otherwise as soon as the address to which the dispensation relates becomes apparent in the course of the meeting. Now this meeting of the full council with the budget includes every penny that councillors are receiving, right? Every penny, whether that's the police and crime panel, that's just been declared. Before about the fire authority, it's all about people's wages or people's allowance that they're getting. It's payments, but it clearly says that every one of these that's got a dispensation must declare it for them people in the public gallery and for the people watching on television. I shouldn't have to tell you as the constitution, will you have a look?
Thank you councillor, but can I just point out, I do not consider that you have raised a point of order as defined in procedure rule 12.12 and therefore I cannot let you proceed with this, thank you.
Right, can I ask the question why it's in the constitution lady mayor? Why is it in there?
Councillor, I'm sorry, you're going to have to sit down.
After constitution, they're not going to do it, it's not worth the paper written on, carry on.
Right councillor Robertson, I am formally warning you for you to be able to stay in this meeting, I would take into consideration your behaviour and throwing bits of paper across the chamber. Excuse me! Excuse me! Councillor, you've been given a warning, I won't give you a... Right, you will not be further heard councillor. Is that seconded colleagues? Thank you. Right councillor, I'm sorry, I've given you all the warnings, I'm now formally asking you to leave the meeting. Is that... I know. Excuse me councillor, what did you not... Excuse me councillor. Right, excuse me, I'm adjourning this meeting for 10 minutes. I'll take on board what you've said councillor Malcolm, but I am adjourning this meeting for 10 minutes. I just need to move you. Thank you colleagues, please be seated. Just for clarity and in case there's any misunderstanding, I gave councillor Robertson fair warning on two occasions. He was asked to leave the meeting. And just for clarity again, that was seconded. Am I correct? Thank you. Behaviour like that will not be tolerated in a full council meeting. So please let we conduct the rest of this evening's business without any more disturbances. Thank you. Colleagues are reminded that you have disclosureary pecuniary interests. In any item which prevents you from participating in the debate and any vote, you will need to leave the chamber during that item. Item two on this evening's agenda. The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 12th of January 2023. Are they accepted as a correct record? Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, just to bring something up that councillor Roberts had mentioned at the last meeting was when he was discussing Perth Green's year.
Right councillor, can I just say, this is just for correction.
It is, to try to correct something, Madam Mayor.
Right.
Yes.
What is the correction, sorry?
The correction is that when we were talking about it and hadn't, they said it wasn't a school. Well, we know it hasn't been a school for 40 years. But just to put it out there, to let people know, I think the real reason why Perth Green didn't get put down as a polling station is is because the Labour candidate that used to put in that area is bought from Perth Green for bullying women and children. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right, excuse me councillor. Excuse me councillor, can I just remind you? You know about your... Councillor, can I just remind you about your behaviour? Take that as a formal warning. You will be no further heard. Is that seconded colleagues? Thank you colleagues, councillor Best.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Item one, paragraph five, it should read was a founder member rather than founded, please, if that's okay. It's just a terminology thing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Best. Anybody else on the accuracy? Are the minutes agreed as an accurate record? Thank you colleagues. The next item on the agenda is item three. And it's the mayor's announcements and communications. Colleagues, on the 6th of February 2023, a catastrophic and destructive earthquake struck southern and central Turkey as well as the northern and western Syria. Reports now suggest that more than 44,000 people were killed and many thousands more injured. In response, the disaster emergency committee has launched an appeal in a true South Tyneside spirit. Many of our voluntary and community organisations, our schools and faith organisations and groups will be supporting with the aid that has been given to these countries. May I take this opportunity to offer our thoughts and condolences to those who have perished, lost loved ones and those who have been wounded or traumatised and offer our hopes and prayers for their recovery from this disaster. Colleagues, tomorrow, the 24th of February, Russia invaded the Ukraine. Today, almost exactly one year on, we continue to stand with the people of Ukraine as they bravely fight for their democratic future. Our thoughts are with them during this turbulent time. As some of you may know, councillor Amor is poorly again and I'm sure you will with me send our best wishes for him. We now move on to item four on this evening's agenda. Item four is to consider report on the council's medium term financial plan 23 to 2028. The next item of business is, sorry, recommendations as well as capital and investment strategy for 2023 to 2028 and the treasury management from 2023 to 2024. This is an important decision and we want members to be clear about how I will conduct the debate. The constitution requires that anyone wishing to move an amendment to the budget proposals or make recommendations that relate to the budget must have given two working days advance notice to the chief executive or the monitoring officer. No such notice has been delivered. Therefore, as per council procedure rule 12, there can be no amendments moved at this meeting today. I will ask councillor Bell to move the report and with her motion... And with it, sorry, her motion. As the council submitted the council draft budget for approval, councillor Bell is entitled to speak for up to 40 minutes uninterrupted. After councillor Bell's speech, the motion must be seconded. The seconder may speak up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later. I will then open the debate on the motion. The leader, sorry, the leader of the main opposition group, councillor Thompson, is entitled to speak for a period up to 20 minutes uninterrupted and reply to the motion. There will be an opportunity for all members to ask questions or speak up to three minutes. All members apart from councillor Bell, who has a right to reply, have the right to speak only once. So please bear that in mind. Councillor Bell, as the mover of the motion, has a right to reply at the end of the debate on the motion. As is custom and practice, I will allow the leader of the council to close the debate before it is put to the vote. I will now ask councillor Bell to move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow councillors. One of the most important things the council must do each year is to set its budget. We must do this to comply with the law and ensure good governance, but also set out strategically how our plans for the coming years will be resourced. As the mayor has already said, there has been no alternative budget or plans put forward by any of the opposition parties, but I have no doubt that they will have plenty to say about our proposals. 2022 was yet again a remarkable year, but unfortunately not always in a positive way or in the way in which we would have wanted it to go. We lost our dear Queen Elizabeth II and this council was at the forefront in proclaiming our new King Charles III with all the ceremony and grandeur that the occasion deserved. We have developed the Our Council Change Programme, our 20-year vision and strategy. We've held a cost of living summit and rolled out 67 warm spaces where residents can go and keep warm, have a hot drink or just meet with others and that figure is rising. And who would have thought that we would still be talking about Covid? But it is still with us and there's still a way to go. We must continue to do everything we can to protect ourselves, particularly through the remaining winter months. As a council and as a borough, we responded through it all and are still managing to provide the vital services that you and our residents rely on every day. We were there to support residents and businesses through hardship and crisis as we do all year round and as we are still doing now through the cost of living crisis and the high energy cost rises we are all experiencing at present. Inflation is currently over 10% and shows little sign of reducing anytime soon. We are still in the grips of austerity, even though this government would have us believe otherwise. The huge reductions in funding are still with us and have been for over 10 years now. They have not gone away and since 2010, this council has had to find savings of over £190 million. In 2324, a further £3.7 million in savings needs to be found. We will continue to manage our... We will continue to manage our resources prudently so that we remain financially sustainable over the longer term. We cannot do this alone and will continue to work with partners locally, regionally and nationally to secure resources and influence. The government announced that spending power has increased by 9.4% on average for each council between 2223 and 2324. This seems a generous increase at first glance. However, the government settlement assumes increases in council tax to the referendum limit. This is not government grant funding, but requiring councils to increase their local taxation to make up the difference. We have, as I have already said, had over a year of extremely high inflation, so the settlement still represents a real terms cut, and some of the new funding on adult social care comes with strings attached on how the money can actually be spent. The funding settlement, which of course is for one year only, making forward planning unpredictable, does nothing to reverse the halving of core government funding since 2010 and still represents an approach of providing one-off pots of money with no long-term strategy. To support the delivery of high-quality services which our residents expect and deserve, our proposed increase in council tax for 2324 will amount to an extra £1.11 per week for a band A household into which most of South Tyneside households fall. Over 18,000 of our households will still benefit from our council tax support scheme, which will still be in place for 2324. Residents in the borough still pay less in council tax compared to the levels payable in the majority of council areas across the North East. The police commissioner and fire authority, as independent from the council, will levy their own council tax for the services which they each provide. The current financial year has been challenging due to the impact of unanticipated high inflation upon energy, staffing and provider costs. This has affected most councils nationally, and we will, for the first time in many years, be unlikely to be able to keep our spending within budget for 2223. However, the position remains manageable as we have prudently set aside monies from previous years for such an eventuality. Through additional investment in the 2324 budget, we anticipate greater budget stability in the coming year, although anticipated reductions in inflationary pressures still remain uncertain and pose some risk for our financial resilience if they do not materialise. In order to inform our strategic plans, we carried out significant engagement with the public and other stakeholders during the summer months through our South Tyneside conversation. This has shaped the new 20-year vision, which I mentioned earlier, where the borough is somewhere that people live happy, healthy and fulfilled lives, a refreshed set of values which staff and members alike can hold true and the way in which we all work, and a new three-year strategic plan with key core ambitions, which was endorsed and adopted by this council last November. We are on a journey to begin to align our resources to this plan. For example, additional investment in staffing to build upon our initiatives to support residents through the cost of living crisis, which, as I have said earlier, has included the establishment of 67 warm spaces. Additional council tax relief to those on low incomes and clearer advice and guidance on the availability of support. The budget also includes more resources to promote energy efficiency schemes, which are critical to reducing the fuel bills of residents and combating fuel poverty. In addition to the engagement in the summer, I am grateful to all partners who have provided their input to our strategic and financial plans so that we can collectively achieve the best outcome for our residents. Hospital discharges are important and necessary to help the NHS with their Covid backlog, but it is placing a massive strain on adult social care. Residential care numbers have increased by 10% over the last year, and we need to improve the care pathways for residents and strive to maintain people being independent in their own homes for longer through the prevention of crises. That is why we are investing in local area coordinators to help residents connect with networks and local assets in their communities to sustain their physical and mental wellbeing. We are also investing in a new model for supported housing in the borough to assist people with a range of complex needs. We are also investing in new children's residential provision to help support more of our vulnerable children with complex needs in the borough. This builds upon the expansion of other local services to support young people, such as the new Eponne School in South Shields and the expansion of Seaview School to provide a more specialist environment for our send children to be taught and be supported more inclusively. There is also additional investment in children's social care staffing to support stability of the placements of young people with carers, which is so important to their wellbeing. We are also investing in wider provision for our young people through the development of a youth zone facility in conjunction with partners and enabled by some external funding. Building upon over a decade of transformational physical regeneration across the borough, which has transformed our schools, housing, leisure and library facilities, the capital programme continues major investment in neighbourhood schemes through preserving the funding available through the community area forums and key community assets such as our roads and footpaths. Our innovative sustainable energy schemes continue to be supported with the assistance of external funding. These will deliver significant CO2 reductions of over 4,000 tonnes per annum, helping the council become carbon neutral by 2030. We are also delivering nature-based solutions to help combat climate change, such as the Stronger Shores Project, which will help protect against coastal erosion and flooding. We are, of course, bitterly disappointed that the government did not accept our bids for levelling up funding in phase two. Less than 25% of bids nationally were accepted. The beauty parade system adopted by government for funding is bureaucratic and wasteful, pitting different parts of the country against each other, and it cultivates a begging bowl mentality. We will nevertheless continue with our investment across the borough, including, for example, a new campus area and new facilities to enable the relocation of Tyne Coast College into South Shields Town Centre. Investment will be made on a prudent and sustainable basis, which takes advantage of new opportunities, such as the proposed devolution deal to bring new funding into the borough and building upon successes such as the funding already secured through the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which will support a range of valuable community-based initiatives. Our capital programme includes the largest investment in our housing stock for almost a decade. This will support maintaining the condition of our stock so that our tenants can live in high-quality and energy-efficient properties with modern facilities. We will also continue through some direct house building to increase the supply of affordable homes in the borough. We know that what is important to many residents is what is happening in their immediate neighbourhood. Consequently, we are investing more monies around community teams to support work around the environment and community safety. We are also introducing additional investment to improve the street scene and to tackle the weed situation around our neighbourhoods so that the borough continues to be a clean and tidy place for residents and visitors alike. We must continue to protect our assets against increasing risks, such as the potential for a cyber incident. This could render our data and systems on which many of our services completely depend upon making them inaccessible for long periods, creating massive disruption to our services. Therefore, we are also investing more in our cyber defences and upgrading our ability to respond to an incident through safely bringing back our computer systems into use. There are inevitably some savings in our proposed revenue budget. The funding position of local government is such that savings are required every year. However, these have been limited in 2324 to a modest level of 3.7 million, with marginal impact upon frontline services and no job losses through, for example, targeting additional income. The next two financial years to the end of 2526 will be harder, with greater savings required, but we will work together to explore all options, including public sector reform and redesign of services, embracing new digital opportunities through a strengthened strategic and financial planning process, which places co-production with our residents at the heart of how we do things. We will continue to follow best practice by planning our finances over the longer term. Despite a challenging financial environment, this budget charts a positive course for the borough of South Tyneside. I commend this budget and medium term financial plan along with the associated documents, such as the capital and investment strategy and the treasury management strategy to full council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is that seconded?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that and reserve the right to speak towards the end of the debate.
Thank you, councillor Walsh. Now we move to the debate on the motion. The leader of the main opposition group, councillor Thompson, is entitled to speak for a period up to 15 minutes in reply. Councillor Thompson, do you wish to make a reply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fifteen or twenty?
Fifteen.
Talk slowly.
Sorry, it's twenty. It's not fifteen in here. I've just been told it's twenty. Twenty minutes you've got.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, councillor Bell, and all the officers involved in the extensive work in putting together this budget and the medium term financial plan. Of course, we're all facing very difficult times, significant financial pressures. Nobody is exempt, and as a council, we certainly aren't. Undoubtedly, the financial pressures on today's medium term financial plan and budget recommendations and how they impact our residents with a near 5% rise in council tax will not be received well. I understand that, but I will say the current economic climate and how effectively government have asked councils this year to take a lot of the pain for the cost of living crisis by raising the limit on council tax rises should be noted. I'll also say that if we weren't paying 22 million in debt repayments every year, we could have mitigated this pain for our residents. As so many other councils are doing this week in their budgets, by minimising the council tax rise, by utilising council finances to assist. We can't do that. We can't afford that. And that's predominantly responsibility of the Labour Group's management of our finances in South Tyneside over recent decades. And before the Labour Group defend this situation as usual with the rhetoric of it's all because of government cuts, as councillor Bell mentioned since 2010, always inferring that when the Labour Party lost power in 2010, all our financial woes in South Tyneside began. Needs to be said, the reduction in government funding, yes, hugely significant. I think everyone in this chamber appreciates that. But the current debt we have today of around 765 million, yes, 765 million, should not be solely blamed on non-Labour governments. For the record, in 2010, we had already accrued here in South Tyneside a debt level of 560 million. That debt accrued under a Labour government, amazing how that gives a different picture. And even more amazing would be how we could have helped our residents in this current cost of living crisis if we weren't paying that 22 million every year in debt repayments. So here we are. This is where we are now. And I will say, there's an awful lot to like about the vision. The 20-year vision, three-year vision, the ambitions, the five-year plan. There's a lot to like for the future of South Tyneside. I want to applaud the hugely significant millions of pounds of external funding brought into our council. But we shouldn't forget to thank government at times. Every time Labour speaks about the government, it's to criticise. Most of this funding is coming from central government. Also, I'm very hopeful for the proposed devolution deal and what that might mean for us here in South Tyneside. If only, if only we could have held a referendum on this deal so we could have confidently taken the people of South Tyneside with us as we take this huge step to devolution. I applaud the investment in the International Advanced Manufacturing Park. The work done to introduce the Onside Youth Zone Programme, which councillor Bell mentioned, to our borough. I think this is huge. I wish it was coming earlier and it needs to be developed. I'm sure it will. The establishment of renewable energy schemes in the borough and the proposed Care Academy is to be applauded, amongst many other exciting projects. And of course, in some ways, centre of everyone's attention, South Tyneside College relocation from Westo to South Shields Town Centre, combined with the town centre redevelopment. As I see it, the Labour Group in poker terms are all in on the college relocation and the town centre redevelopment. It's complicated. There's a considerable risk. It's hugely expensive. But I think, like most people in South Tyneside, who believe if this is done right, and we haven't seen the planning application yet, this is potentially a significant positive for not only South Shields, the borough, the region, and even benefits to people overseas. I have to add that feedback from my ward in Westo is generally positive, even though we face significant disruption for several years with a major housing development on the existing college location. When we look at the MTFP and the 20-year vision, we have five key strategic ambitions. These ambitions are all intrinsically structured into our council service. It's bold. I think everyone will be supportive and thankful to all the officers involved in the significant work that's been done to get this in place. And I fully support the ambitions, the vision, the plans. But don't let this just be words. Currently, an awful lot is just that. Big words in bright colours, in big fonts, on paper. I really hope we make this a reality for our residents. It's mentioned that these ambitions are from intensive engagement with residents. Good, but I think we already knew what our residents wanted. It's more, can the Labour, can the Labour Group deliver on the promises made here today? I really hope so. Only time will tell. It's been declared we've got the foundations of a new council, an exciting journey for South Tyneside, a changed council, new ambitions that puts people at the heart of everything we do. We need to do this because the people who enjoyed the park at Holborn, the people who would have liked a referendum on the proposed devolution deal, the people who wanted St Clair's Hospice rescued or replaced, the people who recently challenged the development of the Cleedleyan industrial estate. These people weren't at the heart of what we have done in recent times. But I'm overall supporting, if we can really now put the people at the heart of things. Certainly, you have to think big to be successful, and we certainly need to be successful with this ambitious plan. Another key strategic ambition is strong communities. This is so important. Ultimately, everything comes back to community. The opposition wasn't until recently expecting to submit again budget amendments, as we did last year for the return of community wardens. We won't be submitting that amendment today. Well done to the Labour Group. You listened. You listen to us. You listen to residents for the return of the community warden scheme, and that's to be applauded. I know the Labour Group couldn't bring themselves to call them community wardens. I think it's engagement officers. But going forward, I hope the re-establishment of the community warden team can be developed and grow to combat the debilitating effects on our communities of in particular antisocial behaviour. A major factor that relates to the key strategic ambition of strong communities and keeping our residents healthy and well is our now well-established network of community area forums, commonly known as CAFs. For every councillor, ultimately every officer, what happens in our CAFs is very important. This is where we get to the root level of every specific location in the borough, speaking to business, speaking to residents about what's happening on the ground and reporting to those communities in the CAFs from our council. Councillor Bell herself said we will continue to provide a focus for local neighbourhood priorities through our community area forums. I want to take this opportunity today to say I'm extremely concerned at rumours coming out of the Labour Group that these hugely effective and well-established CAFs are being considered for restructuring by the Labour Group. I hope this is rumour only because the only reason I can see for doing this at this time would be to restore the majority back to Labour in the Riverside CAF and protect Labour majorities that are at risk in other CAFs. Certainly nothing to do with building stronger communities, more like building a stronger Labour Group at the expense of our communities. But overall, today, I support the vision, the ambitions. And I hope all councillors from all parties can work together to make these bold ambitions and this bold vision become a reality. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Do any members wish to ask questions or speak on the motion? Councillor Heatherington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and colleagues. As we know, pressure on public health funding with below inflation increases in the grants have failed to keep pace with costs. The real terms reduction of the public health grant ignores significant increases in public health issues resulting from the pandemic, further compounded by the cost of living crisis. And I need to acknowledge the hard work of the Public Health Directorate who seek out and secure significant additional funding to help close some of the gaps between the mainstream grant funding and the public health need. And this includes, for example, additional grants for substance misuse totaling one point six million pounds, plus employment support for those in treatment of two hundred and thirty-two thousand pounds, and funding sought from the Integrated Care Board to support our NHS staff and people with mental illness to stop smoking. And that is just a small example of the hard work that's been done. One-off government grants will never be an adequate replacement for sufficient recurrent investment in the public health grant. And the Health Foundation have found that local authority public health interventions provide excellent value for money coming in at three to four times lower than those of the NHS. In South Tyneside, we will continue to prioritise prevention and call on central government for additional investment in public health to make the best use of our resources. Turning now to adult social care. We know that this is the highest proportion of the council's net spend at forty percent. And we have significant demand-led pressures on our adult social care as our population ages and the complexity of need increases. Our carers are experiencing unprecedented pressures upon their health and wellbeing due to the levels of care and support that they're providing to family and friends. The relentless demands associated with hospital discharges, the increases in need due to the COVID pandemic and the cost of living crisis, the deepening of health inequalities are all impacting significantly on adult social care. And short-term funding solutions are not enough to resolve these issues. If we're to deliver upon the asks of the social care reform, improve the quality of care and choice, and deliver the ambitious fair cost of care and invest in our workforce, then funding needs to be available to support this. Our ambition in South Tyneside is for people to live better lives in a place they call home with the people and things that they love. Only properly centrally funded social care without the reliance on the council tax precepts, giving social care and our hard-working care staff parity with the NHS will make a difference. Again, I need to acknowledge the amazing work done by our adult social care teams to cope with these pressures whilst continuing to ensure that the highest level of service is maintained for our most vulnerable residents at their time of need. We will continue our call for a fair funding formula that enables us in South Tyneside to narrow the gaps of inequalities and continue with our home-first policy as well as our valuable work on delay and prevention to give our residents the care and support that they richly deserve. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Heatherington. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to start by highlighting just a few of the positives that are contained here. We've got obviously a clear commitment to improving energy efficiency, which makes sense from both a finance and an environmental perspective. Renewable energy schemes in line with our carbon neutral commitment. And obviously, as has been mentioned, external investment, significant external investment for our communities, not just for regeneration, but also for things like the Stronger Shores Scheme, working on biodiversity, coastal erosion and water quality. I'm also pleased to learn that around a hundred and seventeen thousand pound has been allocated for three community engagement officers who will look at issues including antisocial behaviour, crime prevention and litter waste recycling. Of course, as we've heard, many residents will remember that last year in this meeting, in this room, opposition members called for funding to be allocated to bring back a small number of community wardens to work on, among other things, antisocial behaviour, crime prevention and litter. And last year, members on the benches opposite earnestly explained why they couldn't possibly support this. Many people will be confused by this and wondering what's changed, other than the name, of course. Or is it just a question of who's proposing it this time round? Either way, along with councillor Thompson, I welcome this announcement and I know our communities will do too. In terms of council tax, many residents will want to know one thing from this meeting in terms of how much it will cost them in council tax increases. And it's positive to hear that we managed to keep our own council tax rates lower than our regional neighbours. But we recognise that the council needs to raise income somehow. And in a world where we've lost more than half of our funding over the last ten years. The report also goes on to tell us that sixty-three percent of our income has to come from council tax, retained business rates and use of reserves. As I said last year in this equivalent meeting, we all need to fight for a better deal from central government. Local government faces a funding crisis that is damaging our communities, those that we're now expecting to pay more through council tax and rent increases. The BBC reported this week that the UK government saw a surprise surplus in its finances in January despite substantial spending to help with energy bills and EU payments. The highest self-assessed income tax receipts since records began in nineteen ninety-nine boosted the UK's coffers, meaning it spent less than it received in tax, leaving a five point four billion surplus. And of course, self-assessment is just one part of the taxation picture. Local government needs support from the taxes that should be being collected from national and multinational corporations too. Taxes are a necessary way of funding local services, but we need a fairer system of taxation where those who can afford to pay, pay more and we reduce the burden on our already stretched residents struggling through the cost of living crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Francis. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Undoubtedly, this budget will be received by many as a slap in the face when the vast majority of our residents are struggling under the pressure of price rises as the cost of living climbs. I understand in order to keep vital services going in the care sector and across the board, this is the position we are facing. We don't have a choice. There are no alternative or any magic answers. But we are facing this position today with our pockets empty. We didn't fix the roof when the sun was shining. We accumulated debt. It now stands at seven hundred and sixty-five million or close to that figure with interest payments that suck up twenty-two million annually that we could have used to cushion the bad times we are facing now. I just wanted to build on something that councillor Thompson had pointed out about the town centre developments and the cumulative overall effect that's had on this year's budget and debt. I too see it as a gamble and a costly gamble that potentially could be a white elephant. We'll just have to cross our fingers and see. I'd also like to pick out some good points. And I'm also pleased to see the return of the community wardens. They're much needed and something the opposition has been pushing for for a long time. Much welcome. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brennan. Councillor Bell?
Barclay. Thank you. I am pleased that the midterm financial plan acknowledges the intense pressure that our residents are under as a result of the cost of living crisis. We have taken action to step up our support services, sign posts to outreach networks and work with the voluntary and community sector on facing the challenges ahead. The plan reaffirms our commitment to continue to support residents and businesses across the borough to collectively reshape our services to ensure they are sustainable. Through the plan, we will target support to those that need it the most with the aim of reducing inequalities and making things fairer. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barclay. Councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you councillor Bell for presenting the report. Yeah, me too. It just seems every year the scope and maneuverability within the bounds of finance becomes more and more difficult and I appreciate that. But I was just going to draw your attention to the treasury management strategy in case in point the liability benchmark, which is a relatively new indicator for for the budget. Just from my understanding, the benchmark is calculated through SIFIR and it's basically it's a recommendation as to the maximum debt. I don't know if that's right, but that's what makes sense to me. But my concern again is just without some leg of net is the level of debt and interest payments that doesn't sit well with me. And what I've, in my opinion, I think that the benchmark is a good, is a good thing. It's, you know, it's drawn us in the right direction. But I think we should be taking this a step further. And I think incorporating this strategy, there should be a debt reduction plan, not just settling for the maximum that we're allowed. And that's all I wanted to draw your attention to. And just wondered what your comments were on that, councillor Bell.
Thank you, councillor Milburn. Councillor Melling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the areas covered by my portfolio, two of South Tyneside's five ambitions are addressed. The first of these is connected to jobs, which states that residents will have access to jobs, skills and learning. They will have the skills and confidence to apply for a wide range of quality local jobs. These jobs will be in key and growing areas of employment and benefit all our borough. South Tyneside College is relocating to the town centre and we will work with the college to equip our residents with the skills and qualifications needed for future opportunities in the low-carbon, digital and advanced manufacturing sectors, as well as much-needed capacity within our health and care workforce, including the development of a care academy. On the International Advanced Manufacturing Park, which we are developing in partnership with Sunderland City Council, we are continuing to develop a joint strategic employment site. The International Advanced Manufacturing Park north of Nissan and west of the A nineteen will lead to the creation of over seven thousand new jobs. The development as well as, is well underway with over five hundred and fifty thousand square feet of bespoke industrial space delivered over three units and a further one million square foot development under construction that will become the base for the UK's first major giga factory. This is all good news despite the terrible financial situation we're working in. The second of these ambitions were strong communities. Residents will live in clean, green and connected communities where they feel safe. On Holborn Riverside, we are continuing to transform the area into a vibrant mix of over four hundred new dwellings and office space. This project will see the development of sustainable businesses and residential communities which broaden the South Tyneside offer and builds upon previous investment in South Shields Town Centre. We will continue to support the development of our town centres and villages. We have recently gathered the views from residents through our South Tyneside conversation. These views from the community and key stakeholders will help us to meet the political, sorry, the critical objectives of increasing footfall in the South Shields Town Centre, improving the quality of the public realm and increasing the overall number of people living within the town centre. The aim is to create a new master plan that is robust enough to ensure that it will be viable and deliverable, whatever changes are over the horizon. The master plan will provide a flexible and strategic framework that will guide economic growth and the physical development of the town centre for the next fifteen to twenty years. We will focus the next phase of our South Tyneside conversation on Hebbin and Jarro in the coming year, thereby creating a whole new South Tyneside across the whole of the borough.
Thank you, councillor Melling. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor McHugh?
Thank you. And thank you for the report and all of the hard work that's gone into all of the projects that have been mentioned that have gone on this year. One thing that I am concerned about is the proposed rent rise to the maximum of seven percent for the council tax, sorry, the council rent. I just think that at this time, obviously, we're in a cost of living crisis and that it's just too much at this time. And I do understand that there are economic pressures, huge economic pressures on the council as prices rise and housing is a place where this will really be felt. But the people paying the council rents are some of the most economically challenged in South Tyneside. And residents, as we know, are being squeezed from every angle. And many simply can't afford any increase in bills. I do know that there is support in place for many of those that are struggling the most, but what about those who won't qualify for that support? Last year was the first time council rate, council rent, sorry, had been increased nationally in a decade after years of decreases actually by the Tories. And this amounted to four percent. So this was the biggest rise, as I say, in over a decade. So now that this council is proposing just a year later to almost double that increase to the maximum allowed by central government. And again, I understand that the council's been chronically underfunded for years and that the cost of materials and labour and everything has increased. But is it right to ask our residents who are struggling the most to fund that gap? That's something that I would find difficult to support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGowan. Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Bell for the presentation whilst I agree with a lot of what's being said here. There's just one glaring thing I like an explanation for within the report and it's, we've made reference to lots of good schemes, one of them being the Stronger Shores. There's a statement on page ninety-seven that says this project is one hundred percent funded through the Environment Agency flood defence grant. Yet if we turn to page ninety-one, we've got part of the strong communities and stronger shores. We have over the next five years, five point four million being thrown at that project. And on page ninety-three, it states that there's council funding of a very small amount, albeit, you know, thirty thousand pounds. But if it's one hundred percent funded, then that throws all of these figures into disarray. Because there's a blatant, is it a mistake? Is it, you know, as it's something that's been overlooked? Another thing that concerns is the cost of living. The opposition has on many occasions tried to scrutinise the private companies associated with the council, which we firmly believe are not private companies. Those companies being Centoria Homes. At the moment, there's a reference here that we're going to give them two million pounds for the next five years. We can't look at it. We can't look at that. It's something that concerns me. We can't get any answers. It's hidden from us as the opposition. And then there's a disposal of over 400 council properties, the South Tyneside Homes, the carbon. Again, there's a £38 million debt attached to that with no scrutiny and no answers. And I just find that very, very questionable. And I was just wondering if you was prepared to give any answers today in the chamber for the benefit of those watching and, you know, the councillors here that have asked these questions in the past. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Is anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Bell for that report. There's just one little bit that worries me a little bit is that the Northumberland Police were giving them nearly six and a half, well, over six and a half million pounds. Is that right? 6.6 million? No, it's wrote down here. I just find that a bit awkward. We're paying the police and it's gone up 9.75% that the residents are going to have to pay. We're paying a lot of money here out to the police force and we're not getting the service that we're paying for. The police aren't doing their job properly. They say here, we're supposed to come here once a year. They've never been here for three years. They're on with. It is about time that the police did turn up and started answering some of these questions, why the residents aren't getting looked after the way they should be. It is a great thing that they bring the community wardens back. That will help the police out. So if we can get the police down to explain stuff, it will be brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. Is anybody else wishing to speak? Councillor Walsh, do you wish to come back as a second? Sorry. Councillor Atkinson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, I just wanted to pick up a few points actually that have been brought forward. I think I knew that the debt or the borrowing would come because it always does. Most councils, if not all councils, borrow to have capital investment. And that's just a fact. The problem is if you can't afford to pay the repayments, and we're offering a balanced budget here, which means we can offer to pay the repayments. So that, you know, we need to just make that absolutely clear because it's, you know, you haven't offered an alternative budget. So I take it from that that none of the opposition, the Greens, the Independents, the Independent Alliance, Conservatives, don't feel that the budget as presented needs to be amended in any shape or form. And I take on board some of the comments with regards to where you would tweak, tweak it. But actually, this is a huge piece of work and thankfully you've recognised the work of officers. But I would also like to recognise the work of elected members right across the chamber by, you know, the committees you've been in and, you know, the scrutiny you've given, the asks that you've made. But I would particularly like to thank the elected members who serve in Cabinet for the hours that's been put in to bring this budget forward. You know, and some of the things that we are bringing forward actually were kind of dangled as a carrot. So we pitch in for bids when governments say, oh, we've got this funding available. It takes office a time to bid for some of these funding opportunities, and we're not always successful. And when we are, you know, what kind of the gratitude is there? And is this any way to run a council? I think not, not after 190 million over the last 13 years. But hehoo. I'd just like as well, I think, to mention that the vision has been well recognised and, you know, people seem to agree that this is a good way forward. But councillor Thompson's leading opposition believes that intensive engagement wasn't necessary because we already knew what residents wanted. Now, this for me, I find a little bit strange because I think the opposition always on about transparency and about talking to people and unlistening to residents. So I was quite, and I wrote down actually what he said. So maybe after the meeting, you'd like to say, tell me what you meant by that. But anyway, I commend the budget. In my particular portfolio, just another bit good news, just for those who don't know, we've got the highest ever leisure membership. We've got over 8,000 people with a leisure membership, and we've got some 18,000 people holding a discount card and regularly using the leisure facilities, which are world-class. And maybe if you could be said, that's capital spend well put in because it's healthy residence. One and a half million visits last year to our leisure centres. So that's my portfolio and I commend the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Axon. Councillor Guy, I'm sorry, just one moment. Can you switch your microphone off, please? Thank you. Councillor Guy, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Bell as well for introducing the report. I had, this is my first budget meeting, so I had a little look at some of our neighbouring councils.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Point of order. If you're addressing the mayor, it's courtesy to stand. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just for the benefit of the people sitting in the room, councillor Guy does not have to stand to address me. He's already explained why. Thank you, councillor Guy, if you continue. Thank you, councillor Guy.
Thank you. Yes, can I start again? Sorry, I've lost my space. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Bell for introducing the report as well. This is my first budget meeting, so I had a little look at some of our neighbouring councils and noticed that in their budgets, they in great detail showed increases in things like planning application fees, licence application fees, parking charges, even oil and mineral extraction permits as well. In our budget, all I can see is an increase in council tax and an increase, obviously, later on in the agenda in our South Tyneside Homes social rents. So I'm just wondering if councillor Bell could answer this question, and that is, are these things that are planning on being increased and that have just been missed from the report? Or are we putting the full burden of the increased costs through the council tax and through the social rents? And yeah, just to clarify as well, and I wasn't planning on saying this, but I do sit down because I have something called dyspraxia, which basically means if I'm standing up and I'm trying to read, I will fall over. That's obviously not something I want to happen. It was clarified when I was first elected, so I apologise if it comes across rude, but I don't mean it to be rude. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Guy. You can't come back in, councillor Thompson. Is it a point of information?
A point of information.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, not a minute.
Sorry?
Sorry, unless you tell us otherwise.
No, fine. It's got to be brief though, councillor.
Councillor Atkinson mentioned that I'd said that we didn't need to speak to residents. I said, but I think we already knew what our residents wanted. And I said, good, that we'd held a consultation. Sorry to have.
Thank you, councillor Thompson, for that. Before I ask the leader to close the debate, I will ask councillor Bell to reply to the debate on the motion. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will try. I have tried to write everything down. If I do miss anything, I do apologise. There's been a lot of talk about debt, and I'm not sure where the figures have come from. The council's debt stands at 648 million. Almost half relates to housing. Comparisons with other councils on a debt per head basis can be misleading if they have disposed of their housing stock such as Durham and Sunderland. However, the value of the assets which our debt supports, such as housing, buildings, schools, libraries, leisure centres, et cetera, is valued at over 1.1 billion pound. The SIFRA review recognised that the council's debt levels are relatively high and that levels of increase from previous years could not be sustained. This was already acknowledged by the council in its capital spending plans, and no new borrowing has taken place over the last 14 months. Our external auditors did not highlight in their most recent annual audit letter, which will be going to the audit committee at their next meeting, any risk around the council's financial sustainability due to its debt levels. Councillor Guy asked about the increases for the fees. That actually forms a different part of the council because the fees are increased at a different time, not this time of year, and that will come, I do believe, I think it's August, but they will come at a different time. Our fees are not increased in line with the budget. Councillor Kennedy, the stronger shores, I'm afraid I will have to defer to my colleague about that. But what I can say is that on page 91, these amounts are a gross figure, and they're not just the council's borrowing, it's the figure gross for that. It includes obviously the external funding. Let's see, where are we? Councillor Roberts, the police, the 6.5 million, I believe that is their precept. And as I said earlier in my presentation, the precept is for the police to decide we don't have any influence on that or the fire authority. It is independent of the council. And I believe that's where that has come from. The community engagement officers, they're not actually community wardens as we knew them. They have an extended list of duties and an extended remit. And we're just hoping that people will see that and that they will be able to go more into the depths of what the neighbourhoods need with the litter. One thing and another, they do have an extended remit. The CAF funding, I have already said, will continue in 23, 24. And any committee reorganisation is the remit of the Constitution Committee, which I believe councillor Thompson does actually sit on. So anything to do with that will go through the Constitution Committee. The rents, unfortunately, we have no control over that. It is government-led. The policy is inflation plus 2%. The reason why rents have not gone up as much as they are now is because inflation has always been a lot less than it is. If the policy had been imposed, we would have been looking at rents imposed by the government of 12% or more. They actually capped that at 7%, and therefore you will find that all councils who have council housing stock would be raising it by the 7%. Unfortunately, we have no control over that. And I believe that was it all. If it isn't, then please come back to me and I will get responses to councillors as and when I receive anything from them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. As is customary practice, I will now ask the leader of the council to close the debate. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you colleagues for your input with regard to the proposals that councillor Bell has put forward. I just want to give a little bit of clarity with regard, just a couple of things. Councillor Bell touched upon the community engagement team, which councillor Francis obviously touched upon as well. And obviously, this team will be delivering planned programme of engagement across the borough, which would include waste and recycling, behaviour change, just climate change, and community resilience with volunteering and community champions. So the team that will be coming forward will very much be community-focused. Then obviously, there was a conversation with regard to councillor Thompson and a number of elected members that touched upon community wardens. Can I just put a little bit of clarity to that as well, colleagues? During Covid, we did some positive work outside in the communities, working with our businesses. And what this team will be doing, these community responders will be building on that work. And it will include providing direct support to businesses and signposting them in basically being able to maintain sustainability. It will be assisting the voluntary and private public-facing sectors with events to promote all levels of engagement. It'll include working alongside the council's communication team and our partners to promote visitors and shopper footfall. It'll encourage strong messaging over local partnerships. But it will also engage with our community safety partners and residents to support the reduction in antisocial behaviour and also look to enforcing public spaces protection orders. So just to give a little bit of clarity, it is more than just community wardens. These are community responders that will be supporting our communities. It's such a critical time. Councillor Thompson touched upon the ambitions and our vision, and obviously councillor Atkinson's touched upon sort of thanking the elected members. But I would like to say a huge thank you to our businesses and our voluntary sectors who are very much involved in our visioning and setting our vision for the next 20 years and our three-year strategy. And this isn't just about words, councillor Thompson. We don't want it to be just about words. And if I can just touch base just very slightly with regard to five ambitions that we have and just pull out a couple of things from our ambitions. And one of them was to support our residents to become financially secure. The cost of living crisis had a huge impact on our communities. But we've worked really hard in getting the messages out there, supporting our communities and our businesses. We've continued our free summer clubs, providing holiday food and activities for some of our children that are most in need. And we've offered extra financial support to over 1,000 of our most affected families. We held a cost of living summit back last year, where we had 28 organisations come forward across the borough to share intelligence and ideas to develop practical actions to reduce financial pressures on our families. Another vision was to support all of our residents to be healthy and well. We have a new health and wellbeing strategy. We've seen our new junior park run in North Marine Park. We're undertaking 700,000 pounds of upgrades at Monken Stadium. And we are investing £3 million in cycling and walking routes across the borough. We have expanded our mockingbird fostering model. We appointed a care leader as ambassador, so these colleagues are just a few. This isn't just about words, colleagues. Another ambition is supporting residents to become connected to jobs. The unemployment rate in South Tyneside is 5.8%, which is slightly down from 8.3. But there's work to be done, and we're working with our partners to create opportunities to connect our people to local jobs. The South Tyneside pledge, where we've seen 160 local businesses becoming proactive in using South Tyneside suppliers more than ever before. We've engaged with our businesses with a survey, which we'll continue to do, colleagues. And we've seen the free wifi in South Shields Town Centre. And then we've got the interest from Rolls Royce, who's interested as a potential site at the International Advanced Manufacturing Park. And then we have the ambition of stronger communities. Colleagues, we've already heard from the lead member with regard to 8% reduction in electricity emissions and 15% reduction in gas emissions. We've got some fantastic work going on with the Planning Select Committee with the ecological emergency declaration. Seascape and stronger shores has been touched upon. The best speech in the UK identified by the Sunday Times for 2022 was here in South Tyneside. And then we've had the huge consultation event, the South Shields Conversation, where we're listening to views of the residents and businesses of South Tyneside to see what they would like to see developing in South Shields for the master plan. And then we have continued with our summer festival, our free events for our residents, our businesses and our visitors, which has seen tens of thousands of pounds come to South Shields and to this borough to enjoy what we offer. Colleagues, these are just a few of our achievements. So this isn't just about words, colleagues. This is about delivering. And this is what this council does best in delivering for our communities. So, Madam Mayor, in closing, as a council, setting a balanced budget is one of the most difficult but important responsibilities. We have especially given these restrictions around public expenditure and the impact on high inflation. However, due to our prudent financial management, we are still able to invest for the communities and focus resources on the areas most in need to our residents. This year, our budget has been prepared using evidence, insight and feedback from thousands of people across the borough. Money has been directed towards addressing residents' concerns, improving improved action on weeds, and a team of community engagement officers who will work with residents on issues ranging from waste and recycling to crime prevention. We recognise that the current cost of living crisis is creating intense pressures for our residents, and we will continue to support our residents wherever we can. And we will continue to support our residents wherever we can. We have enhanced our welfare support provision and have proposed an additional hundred pounds council tax rebate for households on low income. It's important that we have assess, we have the assets and the facilities for people to enjoy in generations to come. And that is why we continue to invest in the borough's capital programme, including roads, footpaths, accessible playground equipment, housing stock and environmental and renewable energy schemes, as well as adults and children's social care accommodation and the regeneration of our three towns. The three year strategy, Madam Mayor, approved by council last year, charts our course through focusing upon five new co-ambitions. Our new medium term financial plan supports delivery of those ambitions and realising our overall vision for South Tyneside to be a place where people live healthy, happy and fulfilled lives, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Legislation requires that a named vote is taken on certain decisions relating to the setting of the budget. I will therefore ask the monitoring officer to record the vote on the medium term financial plan for twenty three to twenty twenty eight and the associated recommendations. Mrs Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Elected members, I will read each of your names alphabetically and I would ask that you please indicate clearly using the microphone as to whether or not you are for, against or abstaining from the vote. Councillor Atkinson?
For.
Councillor Bell?
For.
Councillor Barclay?
For.
Councillor Best?
For.
Councillor Brennan?
For.
Councillor Bristow? Councillor Carter? Councillor Clare?
For.
Councillor Dawes?
For.
Councillor Pede? Councillor Esteem?
For.
Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison?
For.
Councillor Flynn? Councillor Forster? Councillor Francis? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Guy? Councillor Herbert? Councillor Hetherington? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy? Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Lamont? Councillor Lisk? Councillor Malcolm? Councillor K Maxwell? Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McCabe?
For.
Councillor McHugh? Councillor McKeon? Councillor Melling? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Peacock? Councillor Potts? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis? Councillor Roberts? Councillor Stonehouse? Councillor Strike? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor Traynor? Councillor A Walsh? Councillor M Walsh? Councillor Welsh?
For.
Thank you, colleagues. There was forty seven in favour of the budget and there was one abstention. There are a number of other matters that council is asked to agree that do not require a named vote. Members will be asked whether any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. Only if there is a descending voice will a vote be taken. I will therefore work through these in turn. Does council agree the capital investment strategy twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight? Right, can we do? Can we do that by a show of hands? All those in favour? Is there anyone against? That was forty five, four and one abstention. Does council agree the treasury management strategy for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four? Again, can we do that by a show of hands? All in favour? Anyone against? There was forty five in favour and there was one against. Does council agree the minimum, sorry, the minimum revenue provision policy statement for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four? All those in favour, can you raise your hands? Is there anyone against? Forty six, four and one against. Does council agree the pay policy statement? All those in favour, can you raise your hands? Thank you, colleagues. Is there anyone against? Thank you. So that's forty six, four and one against. And finally, does council agree the rent setting policy? All those in favour? Thank you, colleagues. Anyone against? And anyone abstaining? Right, I can announce that there is forty in favour, five against and two abstentions. Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, that concludes the business of the council today. May I thank everyone, including those in the public gallery for their attendance and all those residents watching from home. Safe journey home, colleagues.